Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being patient with us. We had a work session right before this meeting, and then before that, we had a closed session. So we've been here working for your behalf since 5:00 p.m., and we needed just a couple of minutes here to take a break. So I'm going to call to order the March 13, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
This past Saturday, Royal Oak again had the opportunity to demonstrate to the world what type of community we are. A group of bigots tried to intimidate a fabulous new small business in our town, Sidetrack Bookshop, with an organized protest of drag queen story hour. When word spread about the planned disruption, our community responded in the best way possible. The attempted disruption was met with a counter protest over 10 times as large, filled with people committed to inclusivity, diversity, and just common decency. Increasingly, we find ourselves in a world in which people attempt to create outrage to draw attention, and it can feel exhausting to have to stand up to each new provocation. But rather than anger and outrage, last Saturday, we saw that the answer can be to respond with love, with joy, and with the spirit of community. The city of Royal Oak is the great place it is because of our residents. Our shared values were represented in the outpouring of support for Sidetrack, and those values must be embraced and defended. As a mom of three, including two teenage girls, I'm very aware that there are threats to children's well-being out there. But performers reading children's stories are not a threat. A wide range of books in our school and public libraries telling stories about all different types of people with all different types of experiences are not threats. Ensuring that our state anti-discrimination laws protect members of the LGBTQ+ community is not a threat. When people rant about false threats, it would be easy enough to ignore them, but we have an obligation to stand up and say that the right answer is love, not hate. Open-mindedness, not repression. When these disputes came to our city, I am proud that Royal Oak stood up for our community, for our small business, and for a future that I want my kids to have.
(Applause). (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item four tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Collo?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Collo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, a call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, item number five. Exciting topic tonight. Presentation gift from the Herb Family Foundation to the Civic Foundation benefiting the Fred A. Herb Arboretum. Mr. Filipski.
Good evening, there. For any city commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity tonight to acknowledge the generous grant provided by the Barbara, or the Fred A. Herb and Barbara M. Family Fund, Herb Family Foundation, to fund improvements at the Royal Oak Arboretum. Earlier in the year, we were approached by the foundation to maybe help identify some projects that would benefit the city, also in celebration of what would have been Fred A. Herb's 100th birthday. And so in line with both the foundation's mission and our strategic goals as a city related to environmental stewardship, we recognize that the Royal Oak Arboretum would be the most appropriate location for lasting and impactful improvements. I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but to summarize again, the $250,000 in grant funding from the Herb Family Foundation will be used to install a storage shed stocked with tools and equipment to ease the work burden on the many volunteers that labor a lot of hours there. Install an irrigation system that provides water access for the caretakers there throughout the arboretum and the native plant areas. To install wayfinding signage to connect the arboretum to Ten Haves Woods, so you can kind of follow a path and get the full experience. Place, install educational signage as well with QR codes to facilitate learning. And then to place benches throughout to facilitate easier access for individuals with limited mobility and make it just an enjoyable stroll. We also would like to construct an outdoor nature-themed education area to facilitate nature talks and presentations, which currently are performed there. Also to plant 100 trees, and more specifically, 100 native trees to complete the arboretum's full collection of trees, which the Royal Oak Nature Society is really excited about. It would also provide funding to perform invasive species removal treatments and additional educational programming and volunteer appreciation opportunities. So these investments improve the ability of the arboretum's caretakers to continue their labor of love. It enhances the visitor experience there and ensures that this unique community resource can be enjoyed for years to come. Reps from the Royal Oak Nature Society weren't able to be here tonight, but they wanted to express their great excitement and appreciation for this. Many of the comments I've heard from the volunteers there said that they could have only dreamed of having this sort of resource for them to really develop what they would like to see happen at the arb. And so I'll take that opportunity to say we'll also have a dedication ceremony on Feb., excuse me, April 27 at 10:00 a.m., and it's a Thursday, where we'll dedicate the Fred A. Arboretum as we also celebrate our annual Arbor Day tree planting. So I'm pleased to be here with Melissa Damaschke of the Herb Family Foundation, who would also like to say a few words.
Well, it's a pleasure to speak in front of this honorable body tonight and to see some familiar faces. I'm Melissa Damaschke, Vice President of Programs at the Fred A. and Barbara M. Herb Family Foundation. As we reflect on what would have been Fred Herb's 100th birthday this year, this grant means a lot to the foundation and to the family. Fred got his start here in Royal Oak back in 1947 with Herb Lumber, but the herbs have been part of the Royal Oak, Royal Oak's history for generations. As a natural-born entrepreneur and high achiever, Fred touched the lives of thousands of individuals. He and his wife Barbara shared a visionary approach to giving, recognizing that environmental, economic, and societal interests go hand in hand. The foundation uses that same approach to make grants to improve water quality of our local rivers and our Great Lakes, promote environmental health and justice, support sustainable business, and our region's arts and cultural institutions. That's why we were thrilled to have conversations with DPS Director Filipski, to learn the foundation's interests aligned with the city's sustainability plan and the Royal Oak Civic Foundation. We're excited to support the planting of 100 trees and provide other improvements that Director Filipski made to the now renamed Fred A. Herb Arboretum. It's a very special place. From what I understand, it showcases 86 of Michigan's native tree species and a collection of native plants not found in other natural areas throughout the city. Thank you for renaming this special place the Fred A. Herb Arboretum. It will be a visible way for all of us to carry on Fred's legacy of sustainability for years to come.
I mean, on behalf of the citizens of Royal Oak, we're just so grateful for such a grand contribution to our community that will last generations and will only provide, I won't say an improvement, but a much-needed, in fact, complete goal to get all 186 native species in the Royal, or in the Fred A. Herb Arboretum. I gotta get used to saying that. But it's really a testament to your foundation, to the history here in Royal Oak with the Herb Family, and certainly is going to be here for generations to enjoy for many, 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 many years. And when we think about our goals as a city commission, what we want to do in terms of improving the quality of life, offering opportunities for people to learn, and certainly showing at every corner our commitment to sustainability, and having your support and your contribution to this arboretum is just a win beyond our imagination, and we're so grateful. Any other comments from the city commissioners? So maybe a question. When is the, I don't know what we do for arboretums. It's not a ribbon-cutting, a tree planting ceremony. When can we expect sort of a, maybe when time is a little warmer, sort of a, more of a grand consideration?
Like I say, as of now, it's planned to coincide with the tree planting on April 27, but we'd certainly, as improvements are made, would love to host some sort of celebration as well. I think maybe once some of the improvements are completed.
Yeah.
For sure. It's two years as the grant, so we're going to do it in two phases over two years.
Perfect. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I just want to point out, this is a perfect example of why the city created the Royal Oak Civic Foundation here a number of years ago. Foundations like the Herb Foundation can only give to a 501(c)(3). They can't give directly to the city. This is by far the biggest grant the foundation has had an opportunity to handle, but we look forward to other opportunities down the road to, for charitable agencies like the foundation and others to support the great work that we do here.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to the kickoff on April 27, and then certainly over the next two years, you know, seeing it come to fruition and really being, I think, a pretty awesome point of pride for the community and the region, I'll say, because I can't think of anywhere else where, in this metro area, where you can have such direct access to an entire array of Michigan native species. And this is really going to be, I think, a big deal for nature enthusiasts as well as the community. So we're really excited and can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we get to public comment, I do have a notice here from the Oakland County Treasurer's Office for foreclosure prevention that I do want to read. I did, Robert Wittenberg, our Oakland County Treasurer, asked that I just make this quick announcement. Won't be that quick, but read it and make sure that everybody in Royal Oak understands if you're suffering or think you're going to suffer and endure any sort of foreclosure, you know, there are options for you. So the Oakland County Treasurer's Office is in the final stretch of our foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the 2020 or prior year taxes is on March 31 of this year, so right around the corner. That means if the taxes aren't paid off by March 31, or any interested party hasn't entered into a repayment schedule with the Treasurer's Office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of 2022, the Treasurer's Office has conducted over 1,000 taxpayer assistance meetings to assist taxpayers with keeping their properties by working with them to get repayment schedules and/or by identifying resources that may be beneficial to them and their situation. We are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact us before the tax foreclosure deadline if they have any delinquent taxes for 2020 or prior tax years. Taxpayers interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting can call 248-858-0611, or you can visit www.oakgov.com/treasure. There are some resources. There's the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. There's the Financial Empowerment Center, and Lake Shore Legal Aid also provides free legal services to people of low income and seniors. And you can call them at 1-888-783-8190. And it's strongly encouraged, if you think that you are going to be subject to a foreclosure for anything 2020 and prior, that you reach out to the Treasurer's Office. I know our county treasurer does not, and has no ambition to foreclose on properties, so they really want to work with folks and provide any assistance measures, repayment schedules, plans necessary to make sure that we help those homeowners out. So if you are struggling or know somebody that is, before March 31, make sure they reach out to the Treasurer's Office. There's lots of opportunities to help them out. Okay. All right, that gets us to item six, which is public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to the public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the public hearing of necessity standard resolutions two and four, special assessment paving of Fairgro Avenue, you can wait to that time at which the public hearing is open, and you can comment then. If you wish to speak tonight at either the public comment or at the public hearing, please wait till recognized by me, Mayor Fournier, then come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic, with exception to the public hearing where you may raise your hand and speak again once that public hearing is open, if it's germane to the public hearing. There is a timer at the podium to help to keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. You can always reach us via email or on the comment forums on our website. Please note typically, we don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll ask those questions when the topic is discussed. And if your questions are unrelated to any of the topics we're discussing, our city manager is also taking copious notes here, and he will follow up accordingly. So with that, who's first? I'm going to call Ms. Clark first. I know she has a really important announcement for us.
My name is Jenny Clark, and I live at 2419 Harwood Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of the city commission and city staff. I am here to talk about Waterworks Theater Company. For the past 22 years, Waterworks Theater has presented Shakespeare Royal Oak, Michigan's premier outdoor professional Shakespeare festival, right here in Royal Oak Star J.C. Park. I am proud to be the managing director, which I've performed the role for 15 years. And our fearless leader, festival founder Ed Nehat, has asked me to appear tonight to announce that our 23rd season will open this summer and invite each of you watching tonight here in the room or on television to join us in the park. This event provides some exceptional experiences for young artists, for professional artists, as well as emerging artists from our community in a beautiful and unique summer experience. We offer first-rate education programs for students from ages 6 to 18 to learn the fun of Shakespeare, whether it's sonnets, soliloquies, or safe sword fighting and improv right on the professional stage. This summer, I'm very excited to share that we will present Love's Labor's Lost for the very first time, and it will be directed by our Shakespeare Royal Oak alum Craig Ester. In addition, we have another program directed by another Shakespeare education alum Kat Moore, which will be for the teen group, kids ages 13 to 18, and that will be A Winter's Tale, complete with Exit Chased by Bear. For parents interested in those programs, we are all already accepting registrations at shakespeareroyal oak dot com. And it all begins July 27 in Star J.C. Park, and it all closes and wraps up, and everything disappears right into the night on August 5. If you're interested in tickets, the website's handy. Keep it, visit it, check it out. We've got new photos all the time. Many of our city leaders, including former Mayor Ellison and current Mayor Fournier, have participated on our stage sword fighting and being triumphing over Ed Nehat, which I'm very proud to say. And we look forward to seeing you all this summer. All of our programs are, Shakespeare Royal Oak is a nonprofit arts organization, and it's dedicated to this community. Again, we are independent of the city budget, and we do rely on community support and local business sponsors. We look forward to announcing our fundraiser, which you're all invited to join. Probably Ed will be here next time to talk about that, but we hope to see you all in the park this summer and share our magic of Shakespeare Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. It's a great time, even despite former Mayor Ellison and myself, you know, trying to pretend to sword fight.
Yeah, Nehat took that bad.
You're faking it? I know, it was that bad. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe Bomberski. I live at 622 West Houstonia. For about 28 years, I've been a homeowner in Royal Oak, sometimes referred to as the city of trees and Tree City, USA. I'm here tonight to give city officials some feedback on the post-ice and snowstorm activities from a longtime homeowner's perspective. First, I'd like to applaud city management for recently committing resources to clean up storm damage throughout the neighborhoods. So I walk my dog around, and I see a significant amount of tree damage and debris left at the curbs. It's gratifying that the city decided to make a dedicated effort to clean up the storm debris, so thank you. Second, though, I have concerns and some constructive criticism related to city actions and communications in the immediate days following the storm. I detailed my concerns in a letter sent last week to the city manager and the department heads of community development, which includes building and code enforcement areas, and the Department of Public Services. In summary, the ice storm happened on Wednesday and Thursday, Feb. 22, 23. I worked hard to clean up extensive damage of downed branches and limbs that fell both at my house and two of my neighbors. I put the branches in roughly three-foot, 50-foot-long piles along the curbs of my and my neighbor's homes. As I finished cleaning up, the next day, February 24, I called the city to determine if the city would be sending a shredder through the neighborhoods and was told no as a homeowner's responsibility. And I was also told I could contract, or contact the city contractor, J.H. Hart, for assistance at a small fee, by the way, which is $55 for each 15 minutes. On Monday, the 27th, I called J.H. Hart, the contractor, was told they received a high volume of calls and tentatively scheduled me for cleanup Wednesday, March 1. In the meantime, I was shocked to receive a city violation notice dated Tuesday, February 28, for having branches and limbs at the curb. Was given seven days to correct this violation. Couldn't believe the city code enforcement officer was driving around writing violations after this bad ice storm, especially while the city, including my neighborhood, had widespread power outages. From my perspective, I did the best to promptly clean things up. I felt I took prompt, responsible, appropriate action. After reading the code violation, I felt total lack of compassion, common sense, and decency for taxpaying residents during a very challenging time. I've since talked with the code enforcement officer and Jason Craig, the city building official. They each indicated during the early days of the storm, DPS stated it was a homeowner's responsibility to do so, clean it up, and they just were out to enforce the message that tree debris should not be left at the curb. I don't understand why, as this results in cleaner-looking front yards and makes for easier access for workers and shredders, but apparently they felt I was setting a bad example for my neighbors. So I would just like a longer grace period for cleanups, especially when there's widespread power outages. I'd like more clarity for residents as to when the city will and will not assist with a storm cleanup. The city website was not kept up to date. And finally, better communications between DPS and the code enforcement officials. The same day I received the code enforcement was the same, or maybe the prior day DPS made the decision to help out residents.
Thank you, Mr. Bomberski.
Thank you.
And I gotta say, I apologize on behalf of the city. I wouldn't have exercised that sort of discretion.
Thank you.
Seven days out, so.
I appreciate that.
I hear you, I understand, we hear you, we understand, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I have a poster, and if you can tell me, is this where it'll be seen?
Yeah, we can see it. If you want to hold it up or put it on the chair there, we could probably see it.
On a chair?
Yeah.
Okay. Move it up. Okay, my name is Pat Wall. I'm here to address the new parking or pay station kiosks. I've been a resident in Royal Oak since 1974, and it started out as a friendly small town, but it was a big city, a big city with a small-town field. These parking kiosks and the whole system throughout Royal Oak is unfriendly. It's really unfriendly to many people. The parking isn't smart and easy. It's not easy at all. The pamphlet with instructions is four pages long and doesn't answer all the questions we have, like this lens here in the middle that faces the side I pay on. Is that taking my picture? It looks like a camera lens. What are the two circles of perforations that look like speakers on each side of that lens? Are they listening to me? Can they speak to me? That's not, that's not on the pamphlet. Coin meters didn't need a pamphlet at all. It just said, "Insert coins." That was it. And it's obvious which meter was intended for your car. The new screens are difficult to see when the sun glares on them, much like your smartphone, you know, when you have to go to the shadows to see them. Smartphones have to go to the shadows to see them. Okay, sorry. Not the coin meters, though. They have clear glass, their print is black on white, and it's easy to see. Unfriendly to seniors is what it is. Also to physically or mentally handicapped or challenged, those for whom English is a second language, would also have a difficult time. It also appears that we're trying to phase out cash that will take away our freedom to choose how we want to pay. And I think that's an alarm that really needs to be sounded, because if we go to a cashless society without currency and without coin, we're giving our power over to someone else. We all know about how some credit cards have been hacked. You use apps, either credit card or apps, for this parking, and you don't have a choice for coin. I'd like to see Royal Oak make a law that says they will always use cash and use coins and currency, so we have the freedom to choose. Using a credit card or apps makes everyone at risk for being hacked and our sensitive information being stolen. It takes away jobs for people who would otherwise not be able to have sedentary computer-type jobs. And I'm talking about how if we're phasing out coins, which it looks like the plan is because those machines that take coins also take credit cards and apps. Is that right?
Yeah, they do, the ones on the street. Ms. Wall, I do need you to finish with your last statement, and I apologize.
All right. So there's many reasons that we need to address the parking situation, and just, just changing from a five-minute grace period to 15 minutes, you know, it's a computer thing, but we need to not shut out these people who, when I went to a meeting regarding the, the, what was the plan, the model city plan? They said they no longer come to Royal Oak. They're going to go to places where they can park easily.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. We'll go in the far back. I see a hand up in the back. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is my first time speaking in public in Royal Oak. I've been a Lyft driver for 7.3 years. I've lived here for over five. And my biggest problem is trying to pick up passengers. There's no area I can stop and safely pick up people. Like, there's areas that are busy, like on Main Street, where they could easily bag off the parking meters, and then we can pick up people. Instead, I got a ticket on Main Street because there was nowhere for me to park. I mean, it was like an impeding ticket. It was $160. So I live at 800 East Lincoln, and I end up going to Ferndale in Detroit to drive people because it's easier to pick up than it is here, when I literally live three blocks away. It's just frustrating, and it costs more money for passengers because other drivers don't want to come here as well and pick up, because where are you going to pick people up? And then people order when they're at a venue. For example, if you're at 526 Main Street, they're going to order a ride, and they're going to expect me to stop on Main Street to pick somebody up, and I can't. You know, so it's just frustrating. That's it.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Fisher, 310 West 6401. Good time for me to come up. I'd like to talk about the parking as well. I think the main thing we need to consider here is who's the parking supposed to serve and when is it supposed to serve them? I think the on-street parking... I think the on-street parking should mainly serve residents and the businesses as far as commerce goes. At night, by all means, we don't need any street parking. Those people should all be encouraged to go into the garage. As far as Fifth Street goes, between Fifth Avenue and the new place, let's just get rid of Fifth Avenue between there. We should just do it. It's been like that for a long time. If we got rid of it, we could plan around things. We could have electrical hookups for when we have events like Arts Beats and Neat, so on and so forth. And also, I would love to see if we could have some sort of way to have a walkway that goes up and over, as well as an elevator that goes up and over the train crossing there for accessibility and safety reasons. Also, I know you're talking about EV recommendations later tonight. As far as that goes, I think the low-hanging fruit here is an ordinance that says any new parking facility built in the downtown district must have a meter at each spot, whether it be a residential building, whether it be a commercial building, mandatory, because let's just be forward-thinking, because eventually, that's going to be what's needed. In the garage where I park, which is a city garage that I pay monthly for, there are two EV stations. I don't always get to use them, and also, they're not at handicapped parking spots either, which means they're not handicap accessible. So, those are important things. Great stuff about the Lyft driver. I did, I've driven 15,000 miles in the last three months. I do Uber. Great points, salient points here. But yeah, please take all that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Let's go with Mr. Karloski first.
Hello, Rick Karloski, 419 Virginia. To carry on with the parking theme, a couple of things that I noticed were not on there. First off, there's a lot of people that I've talked to who are very upset when a guy pulls out of his parking spot, the little, little icon is still green, he pulls in and gets a ticket. If you're going to have it where the new guy pulling in automatically gets rolled over, which is the current policy, there should be a software change where that light changes when that guy leaves. There's more than, like I say, more than one person has gotten very PO'd, that they pull into what they thought was a green spot with time left on it and then gets a parking ticket. Doesn't feel good. Secondly, with regards to the parking structure, we got 60% usage rate. I don't see anything in your recommendations to try and figure out why people don't use the parking structure. I hear a lot of, "They're just going to have to get used to using it." I get, "We're going to take away all this, all the surface parking and force them to use it." I got news for you folks. They don't have to use it. They can go somewhere else. So, unless we find out why they're not using it and fix that, all you're going to do is PO more people and affect your downtown, okay? You've got 60% now. People are not using the structures. Either they don't feel safe in them, either they, they're too high, they don't, there's not an attendant. I don't know, but we've got to find out why they're not there and not just demand people use them, because they ain't using them and you can't force them to use them. They'll just go somewhere else. Finally, on the parking contract itself, I read the whole thing. I am frankly dismayed that we have three lawyers on the community, on the staff, plus a city attorney, who let a contract like that go through. I don't know how you, I don't know how you cancel it. There's no performance requirements anywhere for that, for that vendor to actually have to fix his system. I mean, there's, there's an option for him to kick another five years, how much revenue is going to happen, there's a lot of stuff in there for them. There's nothing in there for us. Now, I've had 30 years, for, like, people like to say how many 30 years, 40 years in private industry sourcing parts. Trust me, there's no way in hell a contract like that would ever let out with no performance requirements at all. So, I don't know what you have to do to fix with your contract into this stuff, but that one, I don't know how you're going to get out of it, quite honestly. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ashland?
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashley. I live at Royal Oak Manor. The problem with parking around Royal Oak, we have limited parking around our place. We have a new building going up, which means even less. People have gotten tickets for dropping off groceries to their grandmother. Now, five minutes? They can't even make it in the door and up to the floor in the elevators in five minutes, and they get a ticket. It's got to be 20. Three hours? We've got people, grandchildren that want to stay longer to come to see their grandparents or their aunt or whatever. Time is needed to be three hours or more. The next thing I have is on the back-end parking on Washington Center. That place, if you don't change it to head-in, and it can be done. I was a programmer systems analyst for 37 years. I've wrote complicated programs. I even wrote screens. These things on the parking, are just small computers. They can be reprogrammed. Either MSP doesn't have the talent to change those programs or not the will to change them, because they want everybody to back in. I have seen people parking that can't even park straight, heading in. How are you going to get them to park back in straight? Now, come on. It's, Washington and Center Street are going to die, and it will be on your heads when they die if you don't change it to head-in parking. It's a simple task. You have kiosses in P-8. All you do is come up, put their license plate number, boom, boom, they're gone. You can do the same thing with those parking meters on Washington and Center. Matter of fact, you can do them all. All you have to do is change the program. Those are just computers. And if you don't do it and don't do the recommendations that the DDA says, Royal Oak will be a ghost town very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashland. Bill, Mr. Harrison?
Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. And I thought I was going to be the only one speaking about the parking meter problem. There is nothing new in the city manager's update. His recommendations have not changed, and they ignore the DDA's recommendations. And the DDA is the parking committee. Flint has had problems with the MPS meter system since day one. New Jersey, the first MPS installation, did not extend the contract after the initial five years. Flint is four years into a five-year contract and will not renew. Flint has not had much cooperation from the MPS on any of the large issues. MPS will not take responsibility for a problem unless you can prove that there was an issue. Flint also has coin and credit card issues like Royal Oak, where the credit card gets stuck in there and you can't get it out, or it won't take quarters. The MPS system does not reduce the number of people required to manage the system, as we know here. The business owners are burdened with assisting people and using the meters, the same as in Royal Oak. Flint did not expand the MPS system to include surface lots. MPS wanted a separate contract for the surface lots that would have given them a full five years. Is this the same in Royal Oak? I used to tell my clients that I spend their money like I spend my own. If you bought a washing machine that was nothing but trouble and the manufacturer would not fix it, would you buy a dryer from the same manufacturer? Why then would you expand the MPS system to the surface lots when the on-street system is not working and the MPS will not fix it? It doesn't make any sense. Your handling of the parking meter system is irresponsible and is negatively affecting downtown businesses, business owners' livelihood. A longtime restaurant and entertainment business has just posted a sign in their window advising that dining, the dining area is temporarily closed. They are down 40% in year-over-year revenue. And speaking of irresponsible, you paid to have the preparation in the park for a lavatory, and now you're abandoning that and you're putting an even larger lavatory, a comfort station in the corner of the parking lot at the Farmer's Market. Again, this is just irresponsible. Let's money down, down the drain. And the only reason I can think of is that you're putting a larger facility in is to accommodate John Witz and his activities in the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Commission members. I actually wasn't going to speak, but hearing so many people speak sort of inspired me. My name's James. I'd rather not give my address due to my inability to stop fighting with people on Facebook, so don't want them to have my address. You know, I moved to Michigan three years ago and immediately fell in love with Royal Oak. I mean, it's impossible to have a bad meal in the city. People are very friendly, great place to take the family walking, and we hang out over here all the time. I have a little bit of a different aspect from everyone else. I've actually been in parking management for 10 years, especially in the city of San Diego, a city of almost 2 million people. And I really give kudos to the commission. It seems like you guys have been extremely responsive and very eager to sort of settle the issues that's going on with the parking. However, I hate to say it's in vain. Technology-wise, it is nearly impossible to run a vision system on street parking. It's really only designed for one-way in, one-way out, so stadiums, garages, stuff like that. And Municipal Parking Services, who does a great job of sounding like an official government entity, but they're a private company, they do a really good job of selling it to you and selling it to everyone, letting them know, "Hey, we can do this. It's going to eliminate your labor costs and, you know, it's not going to cost you a thing. We're going to come set it up and all we want is half the ticket revenue." But unfortunately, metered cameras are only about 50% accurate. The reason why is because if someone's trying to pull into another stall and they hit the vision of the camera, it triggers the camera. The camera's not continuously running, so since it's not continuously running, that person's going to get triggered for a ticket regardless if they've paid or not. That's how MPS is designed. The reason why they want 50% of the revenue is because they want a ticket as much as they can. It's a wildly inaccurate system. I certainly would never, ever, ever encourage anyone to ever put some sort of operation like that on the street until the technology's there, which we're like maybe four or five years out. I think a much better process would, I mean, I'm, I'm a labor guy. I'm from a union family. I'm a bigger believer of having jobs and having people monitor and actually go out and ticket and, and have like a scanning vehicle and everything like that. But really, all, all that's going to happen is, you know, I'd hate to see the council dwell and spend as much time as they can on it. Whatever changes are, is going to be made, it's still not going to increase the amount of tickets that are going out. It's still not going to increase the efficiency of the system, and it certainly isn't going to be fair to the residents. I would strongly encourage, and if anybody else is having any issues, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone, I'd strongly encourage trying to move away from that type of system. And there are plenty of ways to move away from it, but this isn't the first time that the companies like dupe cities like this before. They have a long track record of doing this, so thanks so much for the time.
Thank you, James. All right, in the back, I see a hand.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first of all, thanks for all the work you do. I'm Dietrich Noor. My wife Katie is sitting in the back row with me. I live at 724 Knoll Street. I've only been here two years as a resident, but about 10 months now as a business owner. And I thought maybe it would be useful to you to hear a business owner's voice. We are on Main Street with Gift Thanks Bakery, and I can, I can actually attest to the fact that Uber Eats drivers don't stop. They, they really would rather not come to Royal Oak. Only in desperation do they pick up the ride, and I think we heard that from a couple of drivers before. I also have at least, I mean, I can't, I can't actually prove it, but I can tell you that we have a store in Rochester, which is sort of our benchmark. When we opened the store in Royal Oak, we thought that by now we would be at about 80% of revenue. We cannot seem to jump over the 50% hurdle. And just from the testimonials that we're getting from our customers and from on social media, et cetera, I, I, I really can, I can come to no other conclusion than it has to do with parking. And I just think you should, you should just hear that from a business owner's perspective. I'm not qualified to comment on the technology. I, I would imagine that asking you to dismantle the system is quite unrealistic, and so that's really not what this is about. But I think if we can just figure out a way to use the technology, to program it in a way that makes it a bit more friendly to use, and maybe most importantly, be very generous with your grace periods. The city will not go bankrupt over five minutes up or down, okay? But if you give the businesses a 30-minute grace period, we may have a fighting chance of explaining to people that they can come in, wait in line, get their stuff, wait for their coffee, maybe even sit down for a quick five-minute chat and go out and not have to be faced with a $20 ticket. So, I, we would just like to, for you to know that from a business owner's perspective and, and, and would encourage you and hope that you will be generous when you decide on these grace periods that are apparently on the, on the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dietrich. Move the corner back here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Leopold, and I live at 702 South Gainsborough. I've been living here just over 20 years. We've had some wild storms in the last several days. I've never imagined so many so close together. Pretty, I mean, I feel 50/50 on how the city has handled the, the tree issue because with the branches that have come down. I feel 50/50 on that. I feel 50/50 because I did a lot of Facebook reading and on what, you know, Bloomfield Hills was doing, Birmingham was doing, that they were making special arrangements to come pick up the branches in Royal Oak. You know, when you call, there was like no plan in place. There was no exception that was going on or anything that, I guess you could say that was pre-planned in case of something like this happened. I'm glad to hear that they came by and picked up my branches. Excuse me, I'm glad to hear they did that, but my first response when I called the city is, "It's my fault if I don't have a tree on the, between the sidewalk and the street. It's my responsibility," like it should be, but exceptions for what's happened. I just, I guess I would, would hope that there's a better plan in place, because climate change is changing, and I would like to see more of that happening. I don't have $55 now to, to call somebody to come and do that special pickup and special, you know, like the guy, the special contractor guy to come. So, I guess I would just like to see a change. I would like to see a plan in place for future storms. We had an amazing amount of trees that came down. I could block six blocks and see, you know, three, four blocks of, of shrubs that have come down on trees. And even in my parents' house where they live, in the northern suburbs, same issue. I guess that's really it, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wegman?
Megan. Janice Wegman. Regarding Agenda Item Number 10, Parking, I've heard all over the news that supposedly there's supposed to be some big announcement tonight, but when I'm looking at the document that was attached to the agenda, there's nothing new there that I can see. So, I can only comment on what, what is in there. If there was something new, it should have been included in the agenda, so for the public and for you to read ahead of time. I agree with extending the five-minute grace period to 15, extending the two-hour parking limit, and adding on-street handicap parking, which I've been requesting repeatedly for about four years now. This afternoon, I was listening to WJR and during a long discussion on how bad the parking is in Royal Oak, Chuck Gadeka and Chris Renwick cited their dislike for the reverse-angle parking, and I agree. But going to parallel will decrease parking by 30 spaces and negatively impact both businesses and customers. And that's the only other alternative I see on, on the proposal. Reverse angle was only supposed to be a test, if you go back and watch the meeting. As Mayor Fournier stated when it was proposed, "We have the ability to reverse course," this is a quote, "if it turns out to be a dismal failure." And that was based on the former police chief's documents. I think we can all agree that that is exactly what it is, a dismal failure. And therefore, changing back to regular angle parking should be included in the contract negotiations with MPS. negotiations with MPS. Secondly, tonight, you are being asked to rubber stamp another contract in Agenda Item Number Nine, the Siren proposal, for $150,000. The document says the $150,000 does not include news releases, videos, letters, marketing materials, website content, flyers, FAQs, talking points, and social media content as part of the campaigns. Given our last contract with Siren exceeded the contract amount by 67%, I can only wonder what...how much more this $150,000 contract will be. Further, what did the other three bidders propose, and what did their bids include? You've only got one presented to you here tonight. Why weren't there proposals attached for review? And without that information, I urge you to vote no on this contract until you can review the other bids. Maybe if you had been given other choices to review, instead of accepting staff's lone recommendation for the MPS downtown parking meters, you could have made a better informed decision. Thank you.
Ms. Wegman. All right, anybody else tonight?
Good evening to all of you. Pasty Regio, 403 Smith Avenue. Haven't been here for a while. First thing I want to say is we have the most wonderful citizens in this city. I grew up here. I've been here since 1944. My parents raised five kids, I raised two. I grew up by Stevenson 11 Mile over there. Went to all the schools here. Now, we have the most wonderful people here, like I said, that are so talented, engineers. The gentleman said he could fix a computer on a meter that wouldn't cost him...you know, he could help. You don't pull the resources from the citizens. You hire consultants, and we pay for that. And I also know that a previous mayor is involved in the convalescent home deal, an attorney for that, that they want to put 21 places in there. Don't tell me that you are in favor of infrastructure when you can have that used as a convalescent home or maybe six or seven apartments or condos or eight. When you have 25 bathrooms, 25 stoves, 25 refrigerators? No, that's not the way it works. That's not common sense. The people that spoke on the 27th, remarkable people. We had a realtor that knows all about real estate. We had people come up about the parking, which is ridiculous. How much money have we spent on the parking? John came up and he asked you a question. He said, "Who approved the development for affordable housing?" And he didn't get an answer. I have a feeling, and I'm not saying I'm accusing anybody, and I have no prejudices or anything like that, but I came up here when I heard that woman speak, "We're going to make Royal Oak the example for the whole United States of America." I would love a documentary on our country someday, I mean, on this city one day, showing that we lost our city and how we brought it back to the all-American city. We have people in this city. We are not prejudiced. You can take...there's always going to be prejudices, but you know what? We are not that kind of city. I grew up here. We didn't have riots in the streets. We didn't have troubles in our schools. People are starting trouble amongst these children. And here's another thing. Adults can do what they want, and you know what I'm talking about. They can do whatever they want. I am not prejudiced. I can say anybody, I respect anybody, who they are, what they do. But when you start hurting children, that's a sin. We are here as adults to protect the children. We are...I'm a voice for the children. No, I know, and they're not supposed to clap, I know. Oh, I'm going to go. Oh, there I go again, it's gone. Well, I'm very angry because the children need to be protected, and so does our city. And I have to say, I have to give you...let me say this. I brought this book up. Tell your children about marijuana, mental illness and violence. Okay, maybe some people want to use it, that's fine. I have to tell you, I know, I gave you this book.
I'll give you one last statement, because I gave everyone else one last statement, but it's got to be quick, okay?
Okay, it's going to be quick. I bought two books. I gave one to the commission. I walked it over to the clerk for you guys to read.
Thank you.
Then, no, then they called.
No, thank you.
No, no, I have to say this, because this is what...then they called.
Ma'am, others want to speak.
And they said, "Do you want the book back?" And I said, "No." And they said they would give it to...
Ma'am? Ma'am, you're out of order now.
They did not give it to the library.
Ma'am, you're out of order. Ma'am, you're out of order, please. Other people want to speak tonight, okay? It's unfair that you get to think that you're...
It's unfair that you did not...
All right, we're going to take a quick recess. We're going to relearn the rules of public comment, I guess, so... All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Just want to remind everybody, I know people get passionate about topics, but it's important to understand that this forum that we're in tonight is a professional business meeting on behalf of the people of Royal Oak, and it's not our commission meeting, it's the people's meeting. And it is very much like a courtroom and less like a football game or a sidewalk. And I know people get passionate about what they want to say, but we have to respect the fact that this place that we're in, City Hall, this meeting room that we're in, and what we're doing tonight is really a function of the entire city, the entire residents of Royal Oak. So I just want you to keep that in mind as, you know, we move forward with this meeting, that we always have to be cognizant of our discourse. I get pretty lax sometimes, but, you know, let's make sure that, you know, we respect the boundaries and the institution here, which is the city of Royal Oak, which is everybody in our community, okay? So, anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir, in the back.
My name is Bob Stugland. I live at 4404 Rochester Road. I grew up on Genesee Street, okay? A few months ago, I was in Washington Street trying to park, trying to use one of the...go to one of the restaurants, and there was cars right behind me when I was trying to back in, and I couldn't do it. I tried to wave around me, it didn't work, okay? I gave up. Came back a second time, I gave up. It's ridiculous. Have you ever had any comment of people that liked that back-end parking? That's all the thing I'd like to know from anybody up there, especially you, okay? Has anybody said they liked the back-end parking? I was frustrated. I'm 17, 73 years old. I don't need to have to try to back in and, you know, be Mario Andretti. I'm not, okay? So that's it. That's my comment. Does anybody like back-end parking? Can anybody answer me? I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Stugland. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Michael Duraski, 1607 Sycamore, Royal Oak, 50-year resident of the city. I like back-end parking. I find it so easy to do. You don't use your camera, use your mirrors, and it works very easily. You put your turn signal on well in advance to let people know you're going to back in. That's the secret. Anyways, and also, I love the ice rink you guys put up. I go over to Novi, pick up my grandkids, bring them over here, they go ice skating, they love it. I want to thank you for all the...everything you've done throughout the years. I love what's going on in the city. I'm a 50-year resident, 50-plus-year resident, and I remember when you could shoot the cannon down Main Street and not hit anything. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to Item Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the Consent Agenda at this time?
It's been a long night, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Commissioner Collo, I always give you the extra stare. All right, so the Consent Agenda consists of City Commission meeting minutes from the 27th, claims from March 7th and March 10th, approval of purchase orders, approval of program year 2023 high-intensity drug trafficking area, sub-recipient agreement, approval of major case assistant team interlocal agreement, library request to create a full-time position, ward of contract for road reconstruction improvements, approval of the tri-party funding agreement for Greenfield Road Roundabout, approval of social district licensee application for Hot Cat R O L L C, historical commission recommendation to conduct ghost tours at the Orson Star House Museum, and authorization to waive fees, World War II Legacy Memorial. All right, is there a motion to...okay, we have motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the Consent Agenda is presented. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to Item Eight, which is a Public Hearing of Necessity, Standard Resolutions Three and Four, Special Assessment, Paving of Fair Grove Avenue, and I see our city engineer, Donahue, is here.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This evening is the Public Hearing of Necessity for Paving of Fair Grove Avenue. This is from Forest Avenue to 149 feet north, so that's the south half of that block. The two properties that are within the assessment district signed the petition in favor of the paving project, and the city clerk did send notice to the property owners of tonight's public hearing. So after having the public hearing and closing it, I have two resolutions for your consideration if you'd like to continue moving forward with the special assessment process. The first is Standard Resolution Three, that would declare this as a necessity, and then the second is Standard Resolution Four, and that will just set the date for the public hearing of assessment to be on April 10th.
Questions for...no questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. The same rules as public comment apply. Anybody wish to speak at tonight's public hearing on this issue? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Steer? No? All right. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it to the side of the table. I'll ask city clerk Halas for confirmation. Is this a roll call vote?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. I just was reading the list of the names the way it's always presented, and I'm always cautious to make sure. Okay. All right, Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of Standard Resolution Number Three.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? We have a motion...or a second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on Three. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of Standard Resolution Number Four.
Motion by Commissioner Perush for Standard Resolution Four. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so Three and Four, we're moving forward. Lot of time here tonight for about three minutes, city engineer Donahue, but we appreciate your time. It's always good to see you. All right, so this brings us to Item Nine, which is Approval of Communications Professionals' Service Agreement, and I am...Mr. Brake is going to take this. I mean, we could call him Mr. Brake for taking a break. He stepped out.
Give me a break, man.
Yeah, give me a break right now. So, how are things? Okay, so we'll just give it a minute here for Mr. Brake. Maybe he thought Standard Resolution Three and Four would be a little bit more contentious.
Can I take something off the Consent Agenda now?
Sorry, the microphone is broken over on the...
On the left side?
Hey, Mr. Brake.
We couldn't even jump to the next slide.
Yeah, because we didn't...
So we...your timing is almost perfect. We just arrived at number eight, or number nine tonight, which is the Communication Professional Services.
All right, and so, good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. We have set out through our strategic plan to conduct and to enhance our communications. And there are many other plans that have been carefully thought out of, whether it be the Environmental and Sustainability Action Plan, as well as the Agent in Place, really talks about a lot of community engagement. We have set out to seek proposals from consultants, and we've received six proposals, three of which we interviewed, and a firm that we have worked with and that I've become acquainted through my membership at the DDA Board that is equipped, has the capacity, and can broaden our abilities to assist in what we would like to accomplish. So I'm presenting to you a recommendation that I'm making to select the firm. We've been talking about this for a long time of really increasing our efforts. We do have many different means, but that's placed on one employee and does not have the public relations end of things. At the same time, looking strategically as we move forward in the initiatives that we are intending to accomplish, we have a lot on the plate right now in the construction activities that we have relative to ARPA, the implementation of these very innovative plans, where we are a leader and/or we can better engage the community to inform the benefits, to participate in through constructive forums to move these forward. So presenting to you Siren PR. I'm very proud to nominate them for your consideration to engage into a one-year contract to carry out these services and hopefully to establish better capacity in what we do and move forward from there. So their proposal is included in the packet. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the principles that will be working directly in this contract and associated with that. And if there's even any questions about prior work, I'm happy to address that as well, so...
Questions for Mr. Brake to start. Mr. Hahn?
Mr. Brake, I understand that Siren is familiar with our city. They've done work with our city in the past, they know our values, they know our goals. But why don't we see the other two vendors that apply for this? Why don't we see their presentation or their information here?
I can provide that to you if you want to delay this, but you entrusted it upon me to make this selection. This is a recommendation that I'm making, and it's no different than when I go to hire someone to say, "Well, we need to see the applicants of the other individuals." This is a very competitive field, so I can tell you that there are some other great firms that we interviewed as well. Based on my judgment and not only the proximity, but... Based on my judgment and not only the proximity, but really the experience, and they've worked with us before. In fact, Siren was, when we speak of their work with the DDA over this past weekend that led up to the sidetrack demonstration, they issued press releases, or statements, rather. And if you saw statements that came from the DDA, that was originated by Siren. That is an example of, you know, in real time of what has occurred. So, this notion that was not only myself, but a group of us, that Mr. Todd Fenton and Susan Barkman and Judy Davis were all part of the selection process. So this was a collective decision that we made.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes, so in addition to the DDA, the Siren has had a series of contracts from lots from the city, some of which were approved by this body and some of which were just from through your office over the past year. And, you know, I saw in the report some of the items that they highlighted as sort of the main things they had done. You know, one of them was the parking system rollout. Knows it is what it is. And another one. Wait, now I forgot what the one was. It was the police chief and the parking system rollout. Oh, and then the ARPA, the ARPA civic engagement. And so the ARPA civic engagement, I think we had fewer than fifty residents who showed up over the course of that time. So I know that those are the highlights that were in the report, but I also know that you've worked closely with them over the past year. And I wondered if you had other highlights, other reasons that you wanted to select this firm, things that they've helped you with or helped the city with that I could look at.
I think in those strategic issues, it's, we're in a pretty active office, and we have competing projects that are going on and priorities and weather events as well. And to really make a sound decision in real time. And I feel much more confident in that regard because of the, especially with the media here that we have, really media decision-makers that are editors, who live in the community, that it seems that, not to diminish any of our neighboring communities, but we certainly draw greater attention than we do in other areas. So, by virtue of working with Siren in that regard, you know, we have countless discussions on the ARPA engagement of facilitating through, you know, all the different consultants and how we can better coordinate that. So, I can tell you I've had numerous conversations with them on those topics and even beyond. But some areas get into to be a little bit more sensitive. That, but whether it be personnel matters or alike, that I can't really describe, you know, in depth. But I feel pretty confident in, like I said, just by virtue of, when they were selected by the DDA, I was not involved in that process. So, other than approving the contract, so I wasn't involved in soliciting the proposals and got to know Siren just as a fellow board member in that regard. And I've been impressed with the amount of coverage that they have, that they've been able to articulate the vision and the goals of the DDA and helping them along as well. So, and I think it's an added bonus that they're located here. So they live and breathe this. They're located in downtown Royal Oak. So that was another important element, that they experience the same things that other businesses do as well.
Okay, and I just, I want to follow up on Commissioner, on Commissioner Hunt's comment. So, a year ago when we saw our budget, we were having communication in the budget, there was a line item, I think this line item, and it had Siren written in. And at the time, I pushed back on that and I said, why have we pre-chosen our vendor here in our annual budget? And you told me at the time, well, there's gonna be a process where we bid that out. And, you know, it's a mistake that it's in there and it shouldn't be there. But the fact that we have it in front of us today and we only have one of the vendors, I don't like it. And it's gonna be challenging for me to vote in favor today.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas?
So, well, I appreciate those concerns. I think the city manager's point is valid. This is a professional hire similar to onboarding a new staff person. I think staff has gone through a process and looking at this contract, just, obviously, my day job being in communications and marketing, certainly the services being offered and the price point are on par with market. There's nothing, there's nothing that would raise any flags for me here. So, I'm certainly open to supporting the staff recommendation, especially given that this is a firm that we've worked with before. We know to do excellent work. Regardless of where we landed with parking, when we rolled out the MPS system, things were skeptical to optimistic at the time. I think with time, we've all learned different, the story has changed. But I think we did set ourselves up to hopefully succeed. The system has just presented some challenges. I do have a question, though, about the timeline here. So I see discovery, one to three months, writing the plan, four to five months, and then ongoing communication months six to twelve. Then it also says, as needed, months one to twelve, some communications support. So does that, because we obviously have immediate needs starting on day one. So does mean on day one, this firm would be available to support both in proactive messaging around known issues that we're gonna be addressing, as well as reactive to things that might arise in the community.
So that is a convenient advantage. They already know this community. They know the issues, and they have those conversations with them. So I think the onboarding in terms of getting to know the department directors, because keep in mind that the communications has two different elements, so the outward communication into the community, but also within our own organization. So, the principals of the firm may not have met some of the key departments, or maybe just only aware of them in the periphery. So there'll be a little bit of onboarding and taking that time to get to know staff. But as far as these front and center issues that we're dealing with, where I get a note passed to me coming back from lunch, hey, there's a reporter calling from Channel Seven that wants to do an interview. I feel pretty confident in picking up the phone that they'll be well-versed in what the issues that we're facing.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, also from the perspective of a professional communications career and having worked for public relations consulting firms, there is much value in that continuity in the work that they've already done. It really telescopes the process, I think, and makes them more efficient on our behalf. Mr. Brake uses the example of television, and I think that is one area. And our communications professional does an excellent job. But wrangling TV media and making sure that that messaging is targeted is a job. And I've, you've given examples of the work that they've done, and I think that's especially something that's going to help us with regional awareness, is that handling of local TV. So I, and this is a professional contract. This is a management decision, not a council decision, except to approve the spending, which I will approve. And in fact, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. We'll do Commissioner Perush as a second, and then Commissioner Collo.
Again. I see what you're doing to me tonight.
Save the best for last, right?
We're marginalizing. Just very briefly, I think the fact, number one, that they are local and that they understand and live and breathe in the community and understand our unique perspectives that happen to us. And secondly, because they work so well with the DDA is why I'm supporting this. So much of what happens in the city happens downtown, and so the DDA inevitably gets pulled into it one way or another. And even issues that involve like traffic issues and other things, inevitably, somehow, the downtown gets pulled back into it. So to have the same firm handling this type of thing for both the Downtown Development Authority as well as the broader city, I think is really important. It eliminates a lot of overlap. It eliminates the possibility of any contradictions or confusion between two different entities. And I think that that's, that's really, really important when you're dealing with communication. Because we've seen the bad side of that happening in a number of instances in the past. So, having one firm being able to handle all of that, I think is really good. So I'm in support of the motion.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm also gonna support the motion tonight. Although I don't necessarily agree with everything that's been said tonight, starting with how we were presented. I do believe we should have been presented at least the bit of name and bit amounts on the other items. I think we do see those on other professional contracts that we get or engineering contracts. So I think that at the least, I don't know if we see the presentation, but just knowing who it was and how much it was. And you did outline in the report, so I think maybe in the future that could be an improvement. I also disagree with Commissioner Douglas. We, this is a, this is beyond policy. This is our job. This is our job to improve this. It's beyond a line item in a budget. This is, you know, a big step for the city. This is an important spending. So I think this is something that's important to us. Looking at the city too, you know, there's a lot more, downtown gets a lot of attention. But we even heard in public comment tonight how we communicate on different issues. After a big storm, who's gonna come pick out tree branches? I mean, this is a big thing. The impacts to the community in many different ways and how we communicate to our residents has been a priority for all of us at this table. So having a professional onboarding can help us communicate from small things like to lay trash pickup to big things like, hey, we changed your parking system, right? Or we're improving it, or the twenty million dollars we spent or allocated for two weeks ago that we've not been able to celebrate and let people know about how we're improving the city nearly well enough yet. So having a communications specialist on board, which also then frees up our, she's not a communications specialist. She's our community engagement specialist. You know, her job, she's been the communication specialist because no one else has. So, this is, it's something that's, you know, really needed. And Siren does, you know, as others have said, they do know the city. They've worked, we've worked with them. We've all interviewed them for other ARPA spending. So in terms of hitting the ground running, I think this is the best choice right now at a time that we desperately need communications professionals.
I'll just add, you know, this is a Royal Oak business, which is great. We talked about having the pulse as far as what's going on in our community. But it's also a call to warranty. And what I mean by that is, you know, I don't think any PR firm wants to lose their hometown client. So I do feel that there's probably a little bit of ambition and desire to overperform on this contract. I'm just feeling that, maybe also planting a seed. I think also too, the experience, you know, we need help now. We got a lot going on and a lot of positive things to communicate to our community and our neighbors and broader. And I feel like this firm can certainly hit the ground running. They already know and have the trust of staff. They've worked with them. Some of the work they've done in the past has been more tactical in nature, like communicate this out. And I think now we finally have an opportunity to get a comprehensive strategy that really just doesn't look at what and when, but a strategy to say, how do we handle things? What's important? Are we chasing our tail on things that don't matter? And what are we really talking about with the community that they really care about and they need to know about? But also, you know, working with the press. You know, we all have full-time jobs up here, and some days, you know, I'm sitting, eating a sandwich, trying to get through a conference call, and I'm getting fifty calls. Like, what the heck is going on in Royal Oak today? You know, what is it? And sometimes I'm surprised. I show up here and I'm like, what could call six news cameras? And I think getting ahead of that, I mean, we just had a report by a local news station that literally every single sentence in their report, it was a television report, and I'm not gonna call them out, was verifiably inaccurate. It was every single sentence, except, yes, this is Royal Oak. Other than that, every single sentence was wrong. And then, you know, once that gets out, you know, what are you gonna do? And so I think having this professional competence here to get ahead of those things and, you know, make sure that the city has at least a say in the narrative versus others who wish to do harm or, you know, are misguided or misunderstood, you know, aren't leading the narrative. And I really think that this community deserves it. We have a lot to be incredibly proud of. We're a resilient city. We have so many things going on. It's a place everyone wants to be. And that's why people report on it all the time, right? And so I think that when I look at this, you know, the amount seem well within a professional services contract. If we were to hire our own PR professional, you're talking salaries even more than this. And so, oops, I shouldn't have said that. So these prices are firm, right? But I think that we're gonna hit the ground running, and, you know, we always have the opportunity. If things don't work out, we can move away from it. But I'm doubtful, being this is the hometown city, that they're gonna want any sort of blemish. And I think that they're gonna go above and beyond and continue with the excellency that they've been providing to the city. So I'll be supporting this recommendation from city management.
Okay, I think we got a motion on the table. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we got one? No? Six ayes. Six ayes. Sounds like what a monster would have. All right. So this brings us to item ten, which is the downtown parking update and recommendations. Mr. Brake, I'd like you to kind of kick it off.
I'll start out just talking about what has been going on. We've had six different meetings with the leadership team of MPS recognizing where we need to make some changes. And we're making some progress on that front. So, Mayor, since you have been attending some of these meetings and being, I think, very appropriate from your perspective to take over that conversation and enlighten the crowd.
Yeah. Just to recap, this has been a journey. And a while back, we were confronted with our meter systems. They had 2G on them, so 2G was going away. And we had a couple alternatives presented to us to say, okay, do we go with the same standard meter, updated to 4G, have some of the, you know, cons and pros, I guess, of the past? Or do we move forward with a system that is more software-focused, that would allow several different options for our community? Everything from validating parking to shoring up, to having an app-based approach and all of these things. And MPS did come in and did a heck of a sales job into our police department. The ultimate recommendation of the former chief was to move forward with MPS. We were a little bit on a time crunch, and so we took a good look at it. And, you know, when you look at the benefits that were promoted, this was a system that, you know, could certainly fulfill a number of objectives. We went through a lot of community input with our small businesses in the downtown and with our residents to say, is this something that would work? Do you think it's a good idea? All of these features that this vendor is offering, do you think this will work? And the answer was, yeah. And we got a lot of positive feedback. So then we moved forward and implementation occurred. And it's been challenging. It's been frustrating. We feel that frustration at this table. Trust me, we feel it at the DDA. Our small business owners feel it. Our residents feel it. The people visiting our city, both within the city and from outside the city, feel it. There are a number of things that, you know, certainly did not work out to the expectations that we were hoping for. We've been meeting with several stakeholders in the community over, since this system was implemented. But I will say more urgently, in the last number, I'd say six months with the DDA, seven months, collecting the data, looking at the information, seeing what is working well and what isn't working well. And getting to a point where we move from anecdotal recommendations to things that are actually provingly meaningful. And so, as Mr. Brake said, we've been working urgently and aggressively with MPS. We've had meetings on Friday, Monday. We've had a series of meetings and really conveying to them the expectations and needs of our city. And I believe we're at a point now where we have a understanding that the system as is is not working, and we need to make some significant changes. And both parties agree at this point that those changes are going to be made. Some of those changes are dealing with the city's ability to have more control over our policies, such as grace periods and the length of parking. So does it go to two hour? Does it go to three hour? We do not want to be encumbered by a contract. We want to have the flexibility and ability to make those changes as we see fit. Service level agreement, it was brought up tonight. It's a fair point. You know, what is considered success as far as accuracy of the system? Is it issuing tickets when it should not? Is it working when it should? So some of those things we're going to work on and discuss and get aligned with on how we calculate and look at those things with the vendor. Additionally, the user interface. The system, and I said it before and I'll say it again, people shouldn't be working around the system. The system should be working around the people. And so there are some things from a UI, user interface, meaning that one-on-one engagement that people have, that need to be improved. And so we've provided them a list of. And so we've provided them a list of things that need to be improved, and we're also working on, how do we, as we identify more improvements, how do we handle those, right? Some of them come at no cost, some of them will come at cost. So we are at a point where we have a, I'll say, I believe, Mr. Brake unless you disagree, a meeting of the minds in terms of where we need to go within this contract, what modifications need to be made. But it is going to take a moment for our legal teams to ensure that we don't have another contract that's causing issues down the road. So it's always in the details, it's always in the fine print, but we're at that point now where we feel pretty comfortable that the feedback that we've been getting from our community, from our small business owners, the frustrations that have been expressed to us, have been comprehended in the, I won't say the agreement, but in the negotiations that we have in place right now. And so, like I said, that's going to cover the grace period, it's going to cover the length of time, our ability to modify that. It's going to include service level, like a service level agreement that holds the vendor to a standard of accuracy and compliance and all of these things. And some user interface improvements as well, among a whole lot of other things that, you know, make a contract work. And so, to me, this is a really good step in the right direction, and it's incumbent upon MPS and our city staff to get to a point quickly where we can ink an improved deal and ensure that, you know, people have a chance to look at it and make sure that it's reflecting to the best of our ability, the changes we need to avoid these frustrations that are apparent, clear, and real. Did I hit every point that I wanted to hit?
You did.
Any other comments? Commissioner Macy.
I think I need to make a motion. Do I need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to advise city manager and staff to continue working with MPS.
Discussing both sessions. Yeah, and that would include the city attorney as well.
And the city attorney, as discussed in closed session.
To complete negotiations.
To complete negotiations.
And present a contract.
And present a contract.
Expediently to this commission.
Expediently to this commission.
But it's your motion.
Thank you, thank you. It's finally made, I think.
Okay, we have a second? All right, discussion on the motion. So progress is here, we need a moment to make sure that we get it right. Expect frequent updates along the way, and even an update next Monday. That's where we stand. Because this isn't something that we're going to let, you know, just go to the wayside. It took a lot of work collecting the feedback. The worst thing that you can do is just take a random opinion and say, "Oh yeah, let's go and change that." There is, believe it or not, a lot of due diligence that needs to take place. I give our finance director a lot of credit, because anytime you change things, there's always a financial impact. And what do those financial impacts look like? So we've had to work, you know, very diligently under different scenarios to understand what those financial impacts would be to the community, to the city, so we don't inadvertently make a mistake that's harmful in more than one way. So I'm not asking for patience, I'm just asking for understanding that we are working on this very aggressively, and our staff is working on it very aggressively and professionally. And, you know, we're going to get, you know, we're at a point with the vendor where we have changes that we need agreed to, and we just have to get it into a document that we can review. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. I guess that brings us to the end of the agenda. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Cole, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion.
All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.